All right, so let's call the meeting in order, please. Jennifer, would you please do a roll call?
Miss Bernstein? Mr. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
We're all here. So following up on our closed sessions, is there a motion, please, to appoint Stacy Oliver to fill a vacancy from the resignation of Kehan Parsi on the board until the end of the term that was being served by Kehan Parsi in 2023?
So moved.
Let's Barbara with the second. Jennifer, if you'd be so kind as to have a roll call.
Miss Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Right, the motion has passed. Stacy, congratulations. The next step is to administer the oath of office. Do you have the oath in front of you?
I do.
Okay, great. I'm gonna read it and if you'll be so kind as to repeat after me, and then we will have you sworn in. I, Stacy Oliver.
I, Stacy Oliver.
Having been appointed to the Office of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook.
Having been appointed to the Office of Library Trustee in the village of Northbrook in the county of Cook.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
So with your being remote, we need to have a motion in order to continue with Stacy participating remotely, so that the board will allow you to do so. So is there a motion to allow Stacy Oliver to participate in the meeting electronically, please? Sharon, were you second?
I was second.
Okay. Jennifer, another roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
No, she can't vote until after.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion's approved. Stacy, you can now participate remotely. Just so everyone knows, because we have a remote participant, all votes will be by roll call, and I will call on people so that we make sure everyone has a chance to be heard during discussion. All right, the next item on the agenda. Okay, we don't have under the approved agenda, so actually it's in the consent agenda. All right, so we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Okay, having heard no such desire, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Barbara. Jennifer, roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion's passed. Next item is public comments. Do you have one member of the public? Like to address the board?
Sure. My name's Tony Senor. I'm a representative of the Friends of Northbrook Library. The board has several new members and is interested in participating more actively in library and library board events, and we just wanted to introduce ourselves and send a representative ourselves available to the board for any questions or anything that you might need and to report and working with the board and helping the library.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and attending, and we look forward to having you at future meetings. I know over the past, we have various times had different activities with the Friends, and we've always been seeking to establish stronger relationships, so we really are happy to have you here, and hopefully we can build upon the relationship.
Great, thank you.
So that's the public comments. The next item on the agenda, staff reports, Kate.
I just wanted to, you guys have this in your blue folders, but just reiterate the thank you from the staff for the blizzards that the board purchased. They received them last Friday, and they were quickly devoured and made staff very, very happy. So thank you guys very much for that. It was very much appreciated. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is that I will be taking periodic days off between now and the end of the year, like a day here, a day there, just to, you know, some more vacation time that still exists. No chunks of time though, but just so the board is aware in case you try to reach me and I am not as available. And that's it, unless anyone has any questions on anything from my report.
Stacy, do you have any questions for Kate? Next item is board member reports. This is the part of the agenda where any board member could make a presentation or report on any recent activity. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to report? Barbara, Sharon? Stacy, if you'd like to say anything. Next item is unfinished business. The first unfinished business is visiting other libraries. Couple of months ago, we had talked about, but put on hold the idea of visiting another library in the area to see and to learn more about what other libraries are doing. Stacy, you see, now this is something we've done before COVID. On an annual basis, we would choose a library, we'd go visit it. We'd meet with the staff, they'd give us a tour. We'd see what the other libraries are doing, what kind of changes they've made, or different things they might be doing than what we're doing. Then afterward, we'd had a group dinner to kind of discuss what we saw. It's been an interesting excursion, so we learned a little bit more about opportunities and ideas. We had talked about visiting a couple of libraries in the area until the outbreak started in the late summer or early fall. We put it on hold and then Kate had put it back on the agenda so we could discuss whether the group is comfortable again with the idea of doing it or if we should postpone. If we are comfortable, then Kate had a couple of recommendations as to area libraries to visit, the first being Palatine and the second being Prospect Heights. Kate, do you want to kind of address what the advantages of each are?
Palatine is similar in size to us, and they've just done a major renovation, so it isn't a new building, so similar to what we've been doing. Prospect Heights also did a major renovation. They're smaller, but they are more closer to us. They're more our neighbor. Both would be, I think, nice to visit. Prospect Heights was done by Tiffany and Dan with Product Architecture and Design, who does our project. So I think either one would be interesting to see for different reasons.
So I guess I'll leave it up to the group to kind of stay how they, what their thoughts are in terms of their comfort level, and if they're comfortable, if there's a specific one of these two libraries they prefer to visit. Jamie, I'll just start with you, we'll go around kind of from that side. Around, and then Stacy, we'll end with you.
I'd be interested in having the trip and the difference between the two.
Abby?
Same. The only thing is I'm already marking on that like during the holiday season.
We would do it sometime beginning of the next year.
Oh, then, and I think either one is fine.
I am interested in doing it. It's very valuable, and I don't.
I too would be very interested in going and whichever resource, place, everybody wants to go to is fine.
I'm interested in going, and I agree, I'd go to either one of them. I would say if either one of the libraries have currently renovated areas similar to ones that we're considering in the near future, that might sway me slightly more.
Palatine is going to be the closest from that. They did a full scale. They basically took the projects we've been doing annually, but did it all at once.
The.
Well, once, I think, Maureen, you're referring to the second and third floor renovations for next year.
Right.
So they've done the teen or childhood sections, and then the upstairs is audiovisual and.
Yeah, they did their meeting rooms, they did their, so they've done the whole library.
But Prospect Heights is the, it didn't do their.
They did most of it, but they're also, they're about, I think, 25,000 square feet. I don't remember how big, Palatine is closer in size with us though, so they're actually a little bit bigger, but the building.
Stacy, do you have any thoughts?
I would be comfortable making the trip, and it sounds like Palatine probably makes the most sense in terms of use of time.
So Kate, I think that the going and doing it is good. So will you kind of propose a few dates?
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out, I'll reach out to Jeanne Jildre, who's the director, and get some dates from them to see if there's any dates, or rather dates that don't work. And then Jennifer will reach out to the board with possible dates in 2022.
So we're talking, we said 2022, sometime mid to late January, early February, probably?
Yes, unless the board would prefer to wait until there's less chance of snowy iciness and do like a March.
I will be out the last week of March. I don't know, Sharon, if you're gonna be around?
I will not.
It's a pretty great week.
Be like early to mid-March.
Okay, we'll look, maybe late February, early March.
Okay, and then once you have an idea, will you see, and I guess, an email with the poll?
From Jennifer.
Okay, so Stacy, just, you know, typically what will happen is we'll get an email. They'll have a link to a doodle poll, and then it'll have proposed dates and times, and I'll kind of fill it out, and then from there we'll go. Right. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item on the new business is a resolution for board member COVID-19 vaccinations. This was discussed at last meeting, last month's meeting to keep in consistent with what the staff policy would be for the board. Because it's the board and there's no state mandate, it would be a voluntary vaccination policy. But we would be keeping it consistent with the same definition of vaccination as was in the staff policy. If I have any questions, concerns, comments? Is there a motion to adopt the board member COVID-19 vaccination resolution as presented in the meeting materials?
So moved.
Okay, Sharon was the first, Mara was the second. Jennifer, would you be, and that's your roll call?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Great, motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the Director Evaluation Process and the Personnel Committee. Barbara, my note is that you will present to us.
I will, I'll be careful too. We had, I see Maureen was our director person, and Sharon was also part of this committee. And what we did is look at the variety of ways that executive directors or library directors are evaluated. And initially, we went to the American Library Association to see what the recommendations were and the research was on the subject. And they were a very appropriate and well-informed guide to us. And during the course of our meetings, which were always a pleasure, Kate was a part of it, and Jennifer, we talked about the importance of evaluation, and we also talked about linking that to goal completion so that there was really an objective perspective for the evaluation. It wasn't subjective at all. It wasn't, I think. And so we came up with the fact that there were three components to the plan. And the first would be negotiated goals. And that would be goals that Kate develops for the year alongside anybody that might be appointed from the larger board or the entire board itself in conjunction with Kate to establish those goals. And the goals would have to have observable end results. In other words, how will we know if it's successful? So it will be observable, or it will be quantitative, whichever. So the goals are a joint process, and the evaluation comes after the goals have been completed. And the last part of the triumvirate is the board perceptions. So after all is said and done, we, as a board, would comment on were they successfully done? How well were they done? And through that process would be the development of goals for the next year. It's really critical that this link between evaluation and goal setting be well in place. And the research pointed out a lot of variety in terms of goals, what the focus of goals might be. And they included such things as intergovernmental relations, which is something that we added, financial management, facility management. It's a whole range, and we came up with a list of 10 that we felt were really appropriate in terms of all of the functions that Kate has to deal with. And that doesn't mean that every year, every one of them was going to have huge goals. So that's to be determined between Kate and the board. And really, they talk about the fact that I put this in because it was kind of a good quote. Using quantifiable measures of library performance, perceptions of board members, and the negotiated goal focus areas provides a good gold, a good basis for discussion and evaluation. So if that makes any sense whatsoever, out of the blue. Please, did I?
So is the recommendation that the committee remain intact in the committee for this year help Kate develop the set of goals for this year?
If there isn't any recommendation, it's just either board representation or the entire board can do that.
We sort of went through and sort of made a list of 10 categories
Right.
for goals, and sort of that some years, they're going to be more weighted, but some things will be more important.
And some of those focus areas will encompass, some goals will encompass more than one focus area. And so that was partly, that has to be considered in consideration as well.
How many goals total are you guys recommending that she carry for the year?
I don't think how many recommendation. I think that some are going to be so enormous that they may be multi-year, and others are more of a project or something that can be done. And I think that's where the negotiated goals come in.
Because I would recommend, just from having done this in the corporate environment, typically like five goals is about right for the year. And I wouldn't recommend having any goal that stretches over a year, rather break it out for whatever that goal is for the year.
Right.
So I think having like, you know, I recommend no more than five. I think it's kind of hard to have one.
And again, some of them, some of the goals cover more than one focus area. So it, you get a lot of bang for the hit.
Is this something that you do with the rest of the staff? Like, do they do goal setting?
Yes, every year, well, this year is a unique year.
Right.
Right. In the before times, every year, as part of the evaluation process, the managers, when they were meeting to review the evaluation, part of it is reflecting on how well they did with the goals set previous year, and then setting goals during that time for the upcoming year. So that is not, we do not use the goals when we would be applying the merit-based increases, because the goals could be very wide-ranging, and sometimes people have like a, you know, a professional learning goal that they wanted to achieve versus someone else that might have a huge project that they're working on. So there isn't a lot of consistency versus the rest of the evaluations have clear metrics that are uniform for the type of position across the organization that we created.
Do you have?
I agree with Abby. And I don't know, I think how we do, I think, I don't know what the 10 of them you had was, but my thoughts are, it would be, did I miss it?
I feel like maybe you guys didn't get the spreadsheet with the goals that I had said kind of were vague last year that has the focus areas listed with the goals as a sample. Did that?
No, I saw it. I'm just.
Not get through. Sorry, I'm wrong. Okay, so I know there was a lot of information.
My thoughts are, we can, like, I don't know if this might just be coinciding with the 10, but we could have four or five or more, like, they're not goals, they're more like categories, like financial goals or things like that. But then the first draft should be up to Kate to come up with sub-bullets within these, what she wants to accomplish. And then we can supplement what we want to add or change. And then maybe mid-year, Kate has a chance to revise that, because that's what we do. Like, things happen, and priorities change, and that can change.
The sheet that Kate had already sent, I've got the first column cut off. If you notice it, there is the goal listed, and then the focus areas.
Oh, and she did announce it.
And this one, there are five focus areas that have to do with dealing with the library through the end and after COVID-19. And that covers a lot of focus areas, including personnel leadership, facilities, management, quality of library services. And so even though it's just one goal, it covers a lot of the areas. So I think having a smaller number of goals doesn't diminish the impact.
It should obviously align with our strategic plan and things like that.
Yes, and so the strategic plan, as we had talked about earlier in this year, which Stacy, we've done, Stacy came and we did a brief orientation, and we're gonna do a more detailed one in December. But the strategic plan was slated to end in earlier this year. Obviously, we didn't do anything last year and haven't done anything this year. So it is time for a revamp, like getting through COVID first. But absolutely, I think typically the strategic plan, given that that is the direction of the board, of the priorities for the library, would inevitably tie very closely in with the goals that I would be setting, because that would be executing the plan.
Also, it was recommended that this, whatever the document is, at the end, it has to be in writing as part of a record that we keep and that Kate keeps. And it's really an important thing that it not just be left, kind of, good job, keep going.
So I'm looking at the memo, and the memo has kind of a timeline laid out in it. On November present, January approved the evaluation format, February began the format. And then below it, it has kind of from February through May, the process of setting the goals, and then I guess implementing for the following year.
And that February to May timeframe would be then what's done every year.
So it'd be the annual process of setting goals for the next year.
And then reflecting on, I would give the self-reflection on how I have achieved the goals while also having given updates throughout the year.
And then that would tie in, I guess, eventually to the final evaluation by the board at year end when we deal with compensation and the rest.
I think the, I should let Barbara and Maureen share and speak.
Definitely, there is, part of the process is the board's perceptions. And that's where we respond to that. Part of the formal process didn't include the setting of compensation, but I think that's a separate board.
I'm just trying to figure out the timeline, how it plays in. So this is, this process of setting and evaluating is complete. I'm assuming before the summer, when we have the separate closed session, that we kind of do the final evaluation.
I think we can adjust it in any way that makes the most sense.
Yeah, I'm not trying to propose an adjustment. I'm just seeing how they two relate. I don't see a problem with this, because it kind of coincides with the end of the fiscal year.
My assumption, when I was putting the timeline together, would be that that last one would, that would be when you guys typically have that discussion similar to what had been done in the past. But it certainly could be the month after, the month, you know, I mean, flexible, but my thought was that it was that last part after the new goals had been set, you guys have reflected on everything that, you know, from the previous year, and had a good sense. And then as we're going into the new fiscal year, decide to have the conversation.
Stacy, did you have any questions?
I'm curious how the timeline that's presented aligns with other staff performance management timelines.
So our fiscal year is May 1 to April 30. So our staff evaluations start in January, where we have the staff do their self-evaluation. And then the managers complete the written evaluation that they had, staff had till the end of January. We also give staff an opportunity to reflect on managers in an anonymous fashion with a simple, you know, online form for people to fill out if they so choose. Then managers have until the middle of March to complete the written evaluation. The HR manager and I, and Kelly, for her reports, review every single evaluation to ensure that there is consistency in scoring, because we have been doing the merit-based increases prior to COVID, to ensure that someone wasn't just giving someone higher scores or lower scores based on not good data. So once those are reviewed, which we usually try to get turned around in a couple of weeks, then the managers have the month of April to sit down with staff, reflect on, go over the evaluation and reflect on the goals that were set from the previous year, and talk about and set goals for the coming year. So this aligns not exactly, but pretty close. And then new salaries for staff go into effect May 1 with the new fiscal year, and that is indicated to them after the board approves the budget, because we can't determine what the increases are until the board has approved what the personnel lines will be.
Any other questions? So nothing here to vote on.
Just more of the first.
Yeah, so it's really just the presentation, and then I guess at the next meeting, Kate, will we be, when you say approve in the memo, will we be at the next meeting voting or approving something specific?
Yes, in January, because we're not meeting in December. So yes, and it could be this, and it was more that if the board had thoughts on things they wanted to change with it or things that they, you know. So I'll bring everything together so you can see the full format with the timeline that the board would be approving. Again, it isn't necessary that you can approve the process, but then, of course, every year, there can be updates made, which is built into the timeline with that discussion piece, so.
I guess what we're looking to prove in January would be the format and the timeline. And then the goals will be something that would be discussed here. Does that sound? Are we on the same page there?
Okay, so then I guess we'll table until January for the final formal approval of the process and timeline. Next item on the agenda is the semi-annual review of closed meeting minutes. Apparently, there are no closed meeting minutes that we need to approve, so we can pass that item. And then the final item in the new business is the fire alarm replacement project. So Kate, are you presenting or is it Anna?
I was gonna just give a brief overview before turning it over to. I was going to just give a brief overview before turning it over to Anna. I know you guys received a lot of information on that this week because we had some changes happening. This is something and Anna will share with you more detail that has been ongoing that we've been troubleshooting. And so it is brought now because it has gone from being something that was slightly problematic, we were working through to more of an emergency situation. And the fire marshal has said that we need to get this done ASAP. And so that is why this is being proposed. And what is being proposed today is that we have a proposal from Effie Moran and we're asking the board to give me the authority to finalize that for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, which is, as you can see in the, in the proposal, a little bit higher than the proposal, but just in case they uncover anything during the work that would give us some contingency room. But Anna can, Anna has been working with Joe, our maintenance manager on this. And so can give you more detail on what has gone on and what needs to be fixed and why. So I, do you want to come? Because it'll be easier to hear.
It's easier here, but she's behind the column.
Anna is, she's on the camera. She's gonna give me grief that I just made her do this. Sorry, Anna, I'm gonna come over here.
You can stand behind Sharon if you want.
So we have been having issues so that you can see me. Sorry, I'm so we've been having issues with the fire panel. When they first started, the area that was putting the panel into trouble wasn't being used. So we tried to diagnose it. We had Effie Moran come in, who is our fire protection maintenance provider. We had Johnson Controls come in because they are the company that can try to diagnose problems with Simplex. They're the Simplex dealer. Okay. Nobody could really diagnose the problem because the panel is just very old. And so everybody told us, you really need to upgrade the panel. I asked the fire marshal to come in and I did a walk-through of the building with him. We talked about the fire panel. We talked about problems. He also agreed that the fire panel needed to be replaced because of its age. It was installed in nineteen ninety-nine. And as we walked through the building, there are changes to code that needs to be addressed because we're changing fire panel. So we had hoped to kind of combine this with another project, like the third floor project. But because of everything that went on with that project, that didn't happen. And then in October, the panel, it, it just intermittently goes into trouble and we can't really pinpoint why. And it happened, it started happening more often. But our concern is because we started offering in-person programs in the auditorium, really need to get this fixed so that the room has fire protection at all.
Just so we understand, when you say the panel, is this the panel that controls the entire fire alarm system throughout the building?
Yes.
And is it also the wiring that connects the panel to various sensors and?
The, the wiring does not need to be replaced. It's the panel itself that needs to be replaced and some of the devices that need to be replaced.
Or devices, meaning sensors or?
The devices, like, okay, so there isn't one in this room. And that's one of the new code that every room like this needs to have a notification device. But in nineteen ninety-nine, what happened was there are devices on the ceiling that they put wall-mounted devices on the ceiling rather than ceiling-mounted devices on the ceiling. And I don't know how the village approved it, like how the fire marshal approved it. He did, but the current fire marshal is like, all of that needs to be replaced. So it's those little red boxes that are on the wall and they have like strolls on them.
Not the alarm boxes that someone pulls, but?
No, yeah, no, they're, they're the ones that are up higher that when there's a fire alarm will be flashing and noise comes out of them.
And the exit signs and the?
That's all fine.
That's all fine.
Yeah, that's all fine. And they all need to sync together. All three floors need to sync together. And so with this fire, fire panel upgrade, that will be taking place as well.
And then in terms of the scope of the building and the amount of interruption and inconvenience, is this like a one-week project, a one-month?
So I spoke to Effie, okay, so I spoke to Effie Moran about that. They have all of, Effie Moran has a fire panel in stock and the wheel lock notification devices that they want to install are all readily available. So they feel if we, when, you know, after we approve the contract, if that happens like in the next couple of days, they would be able to start work the week of December sixth. They would be able to have two people on site. And they think it'll take about three weeks. So through the end of December and then it'll be done. But he promised me that by mid-January, they would be one hundred percent done. But just in case they needed a little bit of leeway, we are saying mid-January. He said that they will only be working, you know, from like seven thirty in the morning to like four thirty in the afternoon. The building will always have fire protection, like, it's not like they're going to take the panel out and then we won't have fire protection. It, that'll be like a day job. And if, if they're doing other things, it, it's not going to be like an overnight thing where the building's not protected. So they're hoping to have it done by the end of December, but he promised me definitely by this.
Questions?
I think the timeline sounds really great here and everything that's going on.
I think that's what they do.
And I, just to emphasize, I mean, I did reach out to the fire marshal to ask like what he thought urgency was on this because we, we haven't gone through a formal bid process, but he said that due to the intermittent nature of the panel going in and out of trouble and the increasing usage of the auditorium and having patrons in there, that it's really a necessity that we replace this as soon as we can.
And so from a procedural standpoint, Kate, we're treating this as an emergency that does not need to have the three bid and go through the bill or closed bid process. Is that correct?
Correct. Although Anna did get three bids when we were originally looking at replacing the fire panel eventually. So Effie Moran being our current vendor, the other two, one actually pulled their bid out and the other one is for proprietary systems. So we would only be able to use them for further maintenance, whereas Effie Moran's is more open source. So we can use multiple vendors to troubleshoot and replace parts. So, so we didn't do a formal bid process for that, but we did get multiple bids. And recommending that Effie Moran one.
Stacy, do you have any questions? Is there a motion to authorize executive director to approve the contract for the fire alarm replacement project from Effie Moran for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and to move with all possible haste to complete the project in the interest of public safety?
Seconded.
So Abby first, Maura second.
Sharon first. Do you say?
Sharon's already made enough motions today.
Abby, if you want to second it, that's fine.
No, I think it's all moved.
I already did. That's what I said. Jennifer, we could get a roll call vote, please.
Miss Bernstein?
Yes.
Miss Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobinger?
Yes.
Miss Oliver?
Yes.
Miss Chu?
Yes.
Miss Young?
Yes.
Miss Unical?
Yes.
All right. So the motion has passed.
Anna, thank you for putting that all together so quickly.
No worries. Thank you. Thank you for approving the project.
Okay. So that is everything on the agenda. There is no closed session. Okay, you have that as your?
We just have it there just in case.
Yes. Agenda building. We're not having a meeting next month because of the holidays. Our next board meeting is scheduled for January twentieth. Has anybody else had anything they'd like to add for the January twentieth?
Can you just get a sense of Civic or here for January? So we're meeting in the interactive classroom. You did meet for the trustee interviews in Civic. What are people's thoughts for the January meeting? Would you feel comfortable going back down to Civic? Or do you feel that we need to stay up here?
Let's go around. Jamie?
Uncomfortable moving back to Civic.
It's fine.
I prefer Civic. Civic.
Civic, okay, Maura?
Civic is slightly less things remarkably worse. I understand, but yeah.
Stacy, do you have any discomfort with Civic? That was where we met for the interview?
No, I think that's fine.
I'm fine with Civic. And Anna, consider the table again with the rest of us?
Probably not. I'll probably still.
She's hoping, she's hoping.
So the next board meeting, January twentieth, twentieth, twenty twenty-two in the Civic. Is there anything anyone else would like to ask be placed on the agenda for the next board meeting?
I do have a question about just looking ahead. The, so our January board meeting is the twentieth and then the February seventeenth and then March seventeenth, which is St. Patrick's Day. Does that pose a problem for anyone? And I'm not going to be able to attend that. For my daughter that day, but just
When I say Julian?
The twenties, it's the week after St. Patrick's Day.
Okay. Twenty eighth is the same. Okay.
I will miss you.
March.
Well, March.
February is the week of President's.
It's also the week of Valentine's Day. So it's a lot of things going on that week.
I mean, we have cake.
So that's seventeen, is that eight? Is that, oh, I think that is a, that might be like a long weekend. I'm not going anywhere.
In February?
Yeah.
I might be gone that weekend. I don't know. But the fifteenth is Monday?
The fourteenth is a Monday in, oh, no, I'm looking at March, sorry. Fourteenth is a Monday for February.
I think that's President's.
President's Day is the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Call the meeting.